Nine. We're starting just a little bit late. Will you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Knutson?
Here.
District one, Morissette.
Here.
District two, Brokaw.
Here.
District three, Bernard.
Here.
District four, Wyland.
Here.
District five, O'Malley.
Here.
District six, Burchill.
Here.
At this time, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. If there's anyone here who would like to address the council about any matter not on tonight's agenda that might come before a future council meeting, this is your chance. We have a surprisingly small audience tonight. We're not used to that. Probably there are more people watching at home. Next is the consent agenda. And these items are marked with a C. And will you please read them for us?
To approve the regular meeting minutes of March 16th, 2009, and special meeting minutes of March 20th, 2009, and the closed session minutes of March 16th and March 20th, 2009. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $180,907.21. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request. To approve the appointment of Steve Wilcox to the St. Cry Economic Development Corporation's Loan Review Committee. To place on file the Community Access Board minutes of March 24th, 2009, and the Library Board 2008 Annual Report. That is all.
Motion approved.
Second. The motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Burchill?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Brokaw?
Yeah.
Consent agenda is approved. And that takes us to number three from the Finance Committee, which is applications for operators licenses.
Mr. Mayor, I recuse myself.
Mr. Morissette has recused. There's a staff recommendation to approve the operators licenses listed on your issue sheet. And the Finance Committee recommended approval of all of these.
Salute.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Chief has already approved.
Yes, he has. Okay.
That's always the case, isn't it?
If there's an issue, he'll bring it to us and Nancy will follow. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the operators licenses are approved. Number four is review of the 2009 capital project budget for possible funding with 2009 notes. We reviewed this briefly, more in the context of the overall spending level in Finance Committee. We went on to kind of postpone it and discuss the awarding the bids for the mill and overlay of Carmichael Road, our major, largest project for the year. I think it might make some sense to do the same here. In fact, maybe we should take these in reverse order. Does that, does anyone object to that? Item number five is to review bids and consider awarding a contract for Carmichael Road Mill and Overlay Project. Our original engineer's estimate for the cost of this project was, I believe, from just under a million to million four, and we put in the budget a million. Am I right about that?
Yeah, close.
The low bid on this came in at $887,177.177. We had developed a working plan of postponing this until the last minute to see if we might be the recipient or be granted some of the federal stimulus funds that are being distributed through the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Those funds have been allocated in a number of ways, and the criteria for what's eligible have been developed on an ongoing basis and continue to be changed. The first part of Wisconsin's approximately $600 million was allocated by the Wisconsin DOT before the federal bill was even passed and signed. And they allocated that first roughly $300 million to DOT-level projects that were already in their hopper. And the rest of it, then there was a Phase One, which we applied and submitted some projects. My criteria or my suggestion to staff was that we should only apply for projects that were already in our master roads plan to be done and not look for things that there's no way that we would do if we didn't have that federal money. Carmichael Road was applied for in Phase One, and we've already heard that we did not receive Phase One funding. The deadline for Phase Two was originally today, and it was our intent to apply for this again in Phase Two because it did fit the criteria fairly well, we thought. Shovel-ready, all basically ready-to-go project for this summer. A couple of things happened. DOT changed the rules and the criteria a little bit last week. They also extended the deadline from April 1st to...
April 8th.
April 8th. They're anticipating many more applications. We have a very good bid here, and we're going to lose this bid and have to rebid if we don't accept it now. And realistically, we won't know who's getting the Phase Two funding before these bids expire. So we would have to go to a rebid process. We'd probably have to re-engineer the project a little bit to fit the new state criteria. For a variety of reasons, I would recommend that we go it alone, that we pay for this in the manner that we had pre-planned. We've had a multi-year financial plan to do road improvements, including this one. And so that's the reason that we're now not going to apply for this one, or at least that's the recommendation here. If you want to go a different way, we can apply for it by the 8th. We have an application essentially ready to go. We can apply for it. I think the soonest we'll hear will probably be May and more likely it might be June, at which point, you know, we've gotten late.
What's the total value of the other projects we're submitting on April 8th?
There's four of them, and they're in the 250 to 500,000 dollar range.
Each?
Yes.
So it's about a million dollars?
Correct.
Or a million and a half?
They're all smaller scope projects.
Okay. The Finance Committee recommendation was to accept the base bid, which, if you remember the detail, we decided to go with two, what was it, two and a half south of 94 and three and a half north?
Hampton.
South of Hampton. Yeah.
Move to accept the bid for Monarch paving in the amount of $887,177.60.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion?
I just have one question. What do we know about strings that may be attached with funding for these projects? And I'm not suggesting we delay this, but for future...
It's my understanding, and Chuck can correct me, there's just the standard environmental has to be part of the, we'd have to get into their STIP, is that what it's called, the State Improvement Plan? I'm not aware of any additional conditions other than what they would normally have for a DOT project.
Well, there's minority business, disadvantaged businesses. There's also Buy American with that, and then, you know, the environmental review associated with that as well.
Free lunch, as I suspected, so, okay. That's what I wanted to hear.
Well, someone's getting a free lunch. It's just that there's probably 25 to 30 applicants for the free lunch, for each free lunch that's getting awarded. And the free lunch may not be completely free.
And they're going to tell you what to eat, too. But other than that...
Other than that, it's free.
Yeah, and it's free.
Would like the council members to remember that even though this bid is under $900,000, when we add contingency and engineering fees, that gets us up over a million, and we are asking for a million in long-term bonding.
That'll be item number four. We're going to come to that part of the discussion next, but it's a good segue into it. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number four, then, we're going out of order a little bit here, is to look at that capital project budget. And we put the sheet in your packet, and you recall that part of our 2009 budget was to make a significant increase in the amount of road maintenance spending. Request from the Public Works Department in this area was for $3 million. We trimmed that down to two, but the recommendation and the way that we constructed our budget was to do $2 million, which is up from about a million to a million three a year is what we've been doing over the last several years. It's a significant increase. And it's mainly made possible by the closure of the TID district last year. Not the money from that, but the tax base from that. And so about half of it's going to this one large project on our biggest busiest road. And then the rest, we'll need to go back to Public Works, and we need to have some discussion about exactly which streets. There's about $450,000 in there for other mill and overlay, and that's, 11th Street has become a very high-traffic street. It's residential, gets a lot of traffic. I think it's number three or four busiest in the city right now, and needs some work. So that's one of them. And then the Flex Patch Program, I think, worked out nicely in the trial, and we'd like to do that. We haven't been able to do crack seal and seal coating the way that we have in the past. We haven't been able to do that for a number of years. We'd like to get that project going again. Comments, suggestions, input? If you are following me, it's here tonight to get Betty going with the process of preparing to sell the notes. But the exact funding needs to go back to Public Works. It's primarily Public Works money. Get some specific suggestions and then come back to Finance and to the council for a final approval of this.
Do you want our suggestions now?
If you've got input now, and ultimately Finance passed a recommendation that we approve and authorize Betty to go forward with the issuance of the debt. But yeah, if you want to talk about the projects, go ahead.
Well, just a couple of inputs. I think Wisconsin Street needs to be really looked at, along with Myrtle Street.
Okay.
We do have Wisconsin Street on the list.
I thought, yeah.
In Wisconsin, 11th are two of the projects that we are also applying for.
Exactly.
And Myrtle Street from second to first? No curb and gutter?
But there is no... Other comments?
And what's the carpet replacement in here or the whole building?
It's actually the municipal...
Oh, oh, okay.
Right, Betty, I believe it's the municipal court offices.
Move for approval of the long-term bonding in the amount of 1.99, 440 million.
Second. Betty explained to us that to reach that number, you probably have to actually sell a note that was more like 2.05 to get this as net proceeds. Is that okay with you?
Yes, I'll amend my motion to that.
And was there a second?
Yeah.
Second. Any discussion? I think Randy, maybe this is as good a time as I need to just talk a little bit. You know, our assessment policy for street repairs is, you know, mill and overlay happens in front of your house. It happens, and it gets paid for through general taxes. There's not usually a special assessment. However, if you never had curb and gutter, you're going to get a major special assessment. It's surprising how unpopular those are with the people that get the very large tax bill in a year that, you know what, their finances are already stressed. Wisconsin Street, we came about that close to doing that project around a decade ago, and there was a hue and cry for the people that were about ready to receive a major special assessment, and we ended up doing kind of a Band-Aid approach. I mean, it's functioned, okay? We put down more asphalt. We don't have curb and gutter. Now, the four projects that we have applications ready for to go in for potential funding through the ARRA, federal money coming through the Wisconsin DOT, are for the Wisconsin Street, and these are in the priority that we're submitting them. Wisconsin Street, 11th Street, Hagan, and Vine Street. Now, they're only eligible if they're an arterial road, so Myrtle's not an arterial road. It wouldn't be eligible. Wisconsin is. Vine is actually one of our busiest east-west...
We'd be looking from second to the high school.
Sure.
Second to the high school. That road needs some work, and that's, we think these are still very good projects to be competitive in this grant process. To be honest, probably none of them are as good as Carmichael was, but, you know, there's no rhyme or reason to this, what, how the rules get changed, and you just have to kind of play along with it. So that's where we're at. Now, Wisconsin Street has presented some problems, as I said. This might be a good time to help us tackle that, and that's partly why we put that above 11th Street, which frankly, we're going to get 11th Street done one way or the other here, whether there's federal funding or not. Our approach to this whole thing really is more of a can-do rather than can't apply for and hope that it happens. Because can't apply for and hope that it happens is going to mean a lot of people have reached the fall and their projects didn't happen. So we have to sort of group things into, there's such a priority that we're going to apply for them, but we're doing them anyway? And honestly, that's where a lot of this is going nationwide. That's exactly what the DOT did with the first half of the money, is they didn't even wait for it to be approved. They said, here's where it's going.
That's a great priority list, so I don't know.
So that's where that's at. And so the overall concept of the $2 million is, as long as we're all right with that, then there's time for us to give input through the Public Works Committee and back to Finance, and you'll get your chance to wiggle around on how this all gets spent. I think it's, there's general consensus that we need to really put money into roads. And as I said, in Finance, it's always a matter of priorities. Nothing has a higher priority than increased road maintenance right now, this year 2009. So that's where it's at. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is passed. The next item, then, will be number seven, an update on utility billing procedures. This was mostly an, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped six. Well, as long as I read seven, let me just say that we're taking that back for further staff review after the Finance Committee recommendation. That one needs no action here tonight for the update on utility billing.
Do you want to just at least let the other council members know what's changing with that?
On the utility billing?
Yeah.
Sure.
What we're doing, and so the general public knows, too, is that their next statement coming out in May, instead of having the postcard billing like we've had in the past, is we will have a statement bill, which will come in an envelope and be clearly marked as utility bill enclosed. And so with changing this process, we're also changing and upgrading our mailing system to go into a routing sort. We're doing a lot of good things that have come along with it. And so just to look forward to your new bill looking as a statement as versus a postcard. So a lot of information will be on the back. We'll also be able to put in inserts if the city council would choose to inform people of things of snow plowings, whatever we want to do. We also have that ability in the future to put in with the utility bill and send out information.
Questions? None? Let's go back to number six. Review and approve revised job description and consider reclassification for accounts payable clerk position. The staff recommendation was to approve the new job description and to reclassify Kathy Blutton from an account clerk two to an accountant slash accounts payable clerk. She'll be moved from level 12 to level 14, transfer from level F...
Step F.
Step F to D.
It'll be from a 12F to a 14D.
Okay.
And just to clarify, the levels are based on their job responsibilities, the steps are based on their years of service.
We had some significant amount of discussion on this at Finance. Decided to recommend going ahead with it, as the staff had recommended. We'll come back and report.
I'll be contacting the labor attorney to discuss options, possibly more human resources duties and responsibilities and how that would impact her being in the union versus being out of the union. So I'll be checking on that per the request of the committee.
Is this recommendation going to be contingent upon your findings?
No. It's kind of a separate, they asked me to report back on that.
Okay. Then I will move for approval of this change.
Second. Motion in a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item was the Treasurer's Report, which we reviewed at the Finance Committee. We held that over from our last Finance Committee meeting. Any member of the council have comments on that? This is the quarterly report? Monthly report?
Actually, the final, which is...
Yeah, closeout report. Betty gave some brief report on it last time. If you'd like her to go into it at all, you can do so. Otherwise, that was just there for information purposes. Public Works, public safety, park board, new business. Item number A, opposing proposed changes to the prevailing wage law, Resolution Number This resolution came from the League of Municipalities. I was also made aware of it through the City Attorneys Association, I don't know what you're called exactly, but you forwarded something to me. A brief background is that recently, the Department of Workforce Development reinterpreted, made a new determination that private developers doing work in a development that later gets turned over to the public must pay the prevailing wage rate, which essentially means that you're paying more for the work because it's being paid at a prevailing union wage.
Yeah, the Department of Workforce Development has a, they put out a determination that identifies prevailing wages for all the various trades involved in that project, and...
Not necessarily union.
No, you just simply have to pay that prevailing wage.
It got nothing to do with the union.
But don't, we already, which is different than minimum wage, right?
It's a misconstruction to say prevailing union wage. It's the prevailing wage.
The prevailing wage in that area and in those trades. But previous, up until now, none of these, because they're development-driven, not initiated by the municipality. It's different from your standard public works project that's initiated by the municipality. It's private development-driven and now never had been considered to be subject to the prevailing wage law, and the Department of Workforce Development has decided that it is. That's only one aspect of this. That's kind of an administrative decision that's going through an appeal process, but legislatively, there's also a couple of bills in proposed, I think in the budget bill, actually.
There's two bills. In the Governor's Proposed Budget Bill, he included a new requirement that would require prevailing wages to be paid on any project that receives a grant, a loan, any other form of public financial assistance of $2,000 or more. Would also require prevailing wages to be paid on any private projects that received any grant, cooperative agreement, loan, contract, or any other financial assistance from a local government unit. The cooperative agreement language extends prevailing wage to projects beyond those receiving funding from the local government, so it's not clear how far.
So that sounds like government telling you how much money you need to pay your employees that you can't be competitive? I mean, that's what it sounds like.
That's exactly what it is.
Well, the reason that...
Well, it's on contracts. I mean, it's on public works-type contracts.
So when we go off for bid, do we have to query every person that works for them and say, how much do you get paid?
No, typically, right now, this threshold is 200-some thousand dollars. If the project is over that amount, municipality applies for a prevailing wage rate determination and includes that in the plans and specs. And so every contractor bidding on that project knows that's the wage rate they have to pay their employees and subcontractors and so forth, and they are responsible for doing other things, such as posting the wages, keeping records, and so forth.
State monitors, compliance.
Yeah.
The wages are posted by workforce alone.
But it's, I mean, it's going from a 200-some thousand dollar threshold down to a $2,000 threshold for which contracts would have to, you know, get the prevailing wage rate determination and put that in all the, make that a requirement of anyone who bids on that project.
Well, Catherine, isn't that the original amount stated in the Davis-Burnes Act, 1931?
I don't know, Scott.
It was.
I'm just telling you the change from what's current law to what they're proposing, which is a significant...
We need to suspend the rules.
So what, so what it would say is that if this went through, then on every project that we bid out, which all of ours are over $2,000, we would have to have a legal interpretation of how much they pay, or what is the, what's the process?
No, no, you would have to tell them, you have, it's, you give them the information for complying with the prevailing wage. It's their responsibility to comply. They may have to file records with the city, I'm not certain. It's not, there's no, the Department of Workforce Development issues the prevailing wage determination.
We notify them we're doing this project.
We just have to tell the contractors you have to do this.
We notify the state, the state sends the prevailing wage back. We then give those to the...
So if we say this is okay, then everybody in our city pays more money for projects?
Yes.
Exactly. That's the reason that uniformly, the League of Municipalities, the Alliance of Cities, they've all taken the position that this is increasing costs to taxpayers at exactly the wrong time.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
I don't know that we need...
Yeah, it's a resolution.
Right, but suspend, okay. Sorry, it's not discussion time on that.
Well, there was a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Why should we suspend the rules when this, if we suspend the rules, then this doesn't go out for public discussion and voting? I mean, if we suspend the rules and pass it tonight or do something on it tonight, then the public does not get to comment on it.
Correct. Our normal procedure rules would be for two readings, a first reading tonight, and come back at the next meeting of the council. And the motion is to suspend the rules towards adoption tonight rather than wait for a second, second reading and second consideration. Any discussion of the motion?
Sorry. I'm not sure a second reading is necessary. I don't know if too many taxpayers who would come back and say, you know, we'd like to pay more for our public works projects, or we'd like the city to be able to do less work. That's essentially what this prevailing wage law does, so is there urgency in terms of the Governor's budget?
I don't know the timeline on that, to be honest.
There's, he include...
I would guess that the budget's several months down the road. I mean, I would guess, but...
I mean, just as an example, studies have been done in the Boston area where they ended up paying double. Instead of paying $27 an hour, they paid $58 an hour for the same work. I don't know if too many taxpayers are going to say that's a great idea.
Any other discussion? So the motion is on whether to suspend the rules. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
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 So we have two noes, and the motion carries.
I'll move to...
Did I need a roll call on that to suspend the rules? Did I need a roll call on that to suspend the rules?
Yeah, you've got four, so.
Okay.
Move to adopt resolution number three dash oh nine.
Okay, there's a motion to adopt the resolution and a second.
I will be voting against this resolution and I'll tell you why. As you may have guessed, because I do kind of know a little bit about this, I would suspect, I'm guessing, that I'm the only member of this council who actually employs a crew in the buildings trade in Hudson. And this is a problem for me. I would be ashamed to have my name connected with this resolution because of the second or third from the last paragraph, which basically tells us developers do not have to pay the prevailing wage. And I do pay the prevailing wage. And I have seen other contractors, other developers who don't. And I will tell you that from, I will tell you only what I've seen with my own eyes. The people that don't get paid the proper wage are in, almost invariably, recent immigrants to our country who are being preyed upon, in my estimation, by these developers, just as our ancestors were when they came to this country. And I think that that needs to stop. We can't talk about, I believe, we can't talk about our city government as though we're divorced from our own population. The people I employ, at least, are Hudson residents. And I would think that I would want to treat them well. I would think that you would want to treat them well. I would want them not to have to work for predatory developers or be subject to competition from predatory developers who underbid them on jobs because they are not paying a decent living wage. I think we want our people to make a decent living here in Hudson. So as I said, I am ashamed to be connected with this and I will vote no.
Yes, Laurie.
It's interesting, if you look back at the history of this legislation, because it was developed in the depression era and it was developed to keep poor, black individuals in the South from competing with jobs in the North. What you're talking about, Scott, is exactly the opposite. That it actually encourages discrimination. So here's my point. Anytime you get the government telling the private sector what to do, whether it's to put a cap on wages or whether it's to increase wages, it's, it's an unhealthy relationship. I think we need to let the private sector do what they do best. I think we need to let them compete. No one is indenturing these workers, you know, to slavery. If they don't want to work for a lower paying employer, they don't have to. It's not our, it's not the government's job to tell the private sector how much to pay. And it's certainly not our job to make sure that projects cost more for our taxpayers.
Any other member of the council have comments?
I'd like to just respond on a couple of things. Laurie, we're not gonna get into the, the history of the, of the Davis Burns Act, which was enacted by two Republican congressmen in nineteen thirty-one, because that is basically gonna get us into partisan politics and this is a nonpartisan group. The argument you espouse is a very, is a plank of a certain political party and really, I think, has no, no place here. The fact of the matter is, the government, if you, if it's a surprise to anyone here that the government is involved in private enterprise, I don't know what to say. The government tells private enterprise what to do every day. And we have ample, ample evidence recently of how well a private enterprise does when it's left alone. And that's another reason for backing off of this. So I'm gonna stay with my position of voting no.
Call for the question.
Anyone object to voting at this point? Let me just say that I brought this to you with some hesitation. It is an issue that might have some partisan overtones. It was brought to my attention by the city attorney. Community development director, Denny Darnold, brought it to my attention, that it is a problem and that we may want to take a position on it. He supports the, the adoption of the resolution. This is pretty uniformly opposed in the present form, and so I really don't think it is partisan or I wouldn't have brought it to you. That said, I think that the market actually is the best at determining what the appropriate pay is for highly skilled craftsmen. And, you know, whether you're a laborer or, or a mechanic or, or electrician or some other tradesman, market forces will find the right pay to commensurate with your abilities. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Mr. O'Malley voted no. And the resolution is adopted. Next item is B, to consider amending municipal code, chapter one forty-five dash seventeen A and one forty-five dash seventeen C regarding the operator's license requirements. This is ordinance number five dash oh nine.
I'll recuse myself.
Mr. Morissette is recused.
You don't know?
Move to suspend the rules.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on suspending the rules?
I'd like to point out that we are entering the licensing reapplication period. So there is some timeliness to this.
There is. This didn't come through any, just one more time to review that. The standard thing for any one of you that wants to bring a resolution, you can bring it to me, I'll schedule it, we'll read it and refer it to a committee. And that's what's in chapter twenty-three dash eight of council rules in the municipal code. The last one was not sent through any committee. Doesn't have to be. This one has not been through any committee. It was recommended by our clerk Nancy to bring our code book in line with state law and the best practice that came out of materials that you got from who? From the?
Well, from Sergeant Larson and working with the compliance officer.
Okay. So with that, it is somewhat timely, but if you want to delay or send it to a committee, you could certainly do that. Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right.
A move that we adopt resolution, sorry, ordinance five dash oh nine.
Five dash oh nine.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the ordinance. Discussion? Yes.
Would it be possible for a copy of this ordinance to be brought around during that re-licensing period?
That's the idea.
In addition to the, okay.
I think, well, are you saying mail it out to all our licensees or bring it to them?
Can we bring it to them?
I guess my recommendation would be is when they come and get their license or we mail it to them, we would send a copy with that. But another part of this is when Krupich goes around and does his checks, being on the premise, if he comes across a violation and it's not a major one, they would be able to hand it to him, saying, this is a reminder, your operators have to be present or carry their cards with them when they're on duty.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Ordinance five dash oh nine is adopted. Number C is to consider amending the municipal code, chapter one eighty-seven dash nineteen, sex offender residency. I put this in your packet with the intent that it'd be a recommendation from the mayor and before I knew it, through a miscommunication on my part, Jan had put it on the agenda. And so my intent was to read this by title and refer it to the committee. I've since spent some time with Lee. The, the committee has spent about six months working on this.
It is on our agenda for tomorrow for discussion.
It's on the agenda for tomorrow. I think it's time to push forward on this and I like the idea of both safety zones and residency. My guidance to you is narrowly tailor this. I don't like, and I think the consensus that's developing on the council is that the twenty-five hundred foot rules or the two thousand foot rule that, for example, is in place in Green Bay and other cities is so restrictive that in many cases, ninety-nine percent of the city is not available. And I just, I don't believe in that, but I believe we do have a legitimate interest in keeping these child sex offenders in particular away from areas where our children are gathering. So schools and daycares and parks. The DOC already has an internal rule that the, not a rule, but a, but a guideline that they should not be going within a block of those places or living within two blocks, but it's not written down as a rule that can be enforced. And there's no state law on this, and that's the reason that municipalities around the state are taking action. With that, I'd say, without objection, we can just refer this off to the committee as my suggestion to the committee. If you'd like to take it up and do something with it, I'll defer to Lee.
No, my point, the mayor and I met yesterday and went through some of the issues. I have a draft that incorporates his thoughts and my thoughts that I'll, I'll resend out. Earlier in the week, I'd sent you an earlier version, so you'll get another one tonight that we'll be looking at as an update for tomorrow's meeting.
I object to sending it. So I'd like to mo, to actually move on this tonight.
I'm sorry, you object to?
I object to sending it back to committee. I wanna take this, what, as he has in place from Dean, six oh nine as it is. I would like to vote on that tonight.
So you're making a motion to have a first reading?
Correct.
Of ordinance six dash oh nine?
Correct.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Well, I'm puzzled. It's taken six months to get this fired and we can't wait until tomorrow.
Well, this is just first reading. Actually.
Well, if I may. I think it is worth the committee looking at what, what the two of you have discussed and if it's a hybrid.
I totally agree with you, Laurie. This is basically, I have Lee's, hang on, this is almost word for word, Lee's work, and I think that ought to go to committee. That's the process.
It's been in committee for six months.
You're on there, so you can do something about that tomorrow.
I'm trying to do it tonight. I like what I, what, what's been proposed and I'm okay with it. At this point, I'm okay with the two hundred, Lee, so.
A part of my rationale for, for presenting this to you, at the time I drew this up, there was no working draft that had come out of the committee. Now, since then, there is one. And it looks a lot alike when you look at it, because a lot of the whereas's are coming from the same previously adopted elsewhere ordinances, but there are some, not insignificant differences, but the concept here is pretty close. To be frank, I'd prefer it go back, but we've got a motion in a second to have a first reading. Ultimately, it makes no difference. I guess it still gives you the chance to have it at committee and, and bring it back, so.
And I would say, Randy, that what we've worked out is actually more restrictive than what you have sitting in front of you. So it is worth discussing. From my perspective.
The other council people get a copy of that?
Of the committee?
No, that was stated in committee that we were deciding before bringing it to council.
And we meet tomorrow, so after tomorrow's meeting, it could go to the full council.
Oh, I mean, Scott just said he had a copy of Lee's proposal. I haven't seen that.
I had asked Scott, Scott to look at it from a couple of different perspectives. We can't share it amongst everybody, but I can with one other person.
Well, then you got a working form.
Yeah.
A copy?
Then if you wanted it in a committee, why didn't you give me the copy? If you wanted.
I did. I sent it to everybody.
Not the one Scott has.
Yes, I sent it to our entire committee, sir.
Well, it, you know, there's no violation for you to distribute the work product of the committee for information purposes to any member of the public or council who is desirous of that. I mean, that would actually be the state law of an open meetings law, that if you, if you've got something that you're distributing amongst your committee, it's, it's a, it's a public document at that point. Any other member of the council wants to see it and ask you for it, you should give it to them.
Absolutely.
That being said, you can all start discussing things by email or telephone or something or that will be a violation. So you'll have to be more careful if items that are in committee still, you know, begin to be discussed wider than the committee because those discussions could get us in trouble.
Or outside a notice committee meeting.
Outside a notice committee meeting. So, you know, distribution of a draft ordinance is one thing. Other communications and particularly back and forth communications or interactions, I'd caution you on. But it's part of why I tried to bring, at the risk of sticking my nose into this, I'm trying to get us all at least discussing a draft so that now you can say, here's the part I don't like about it, here's the part I don't like about it, let's start working on something that we can come together on. And I thought maybe this was gonna be it, and I actually still think that was some minor tweaks, that we can do something here that'll protect children and be acceptable to the majority.
I'll withdraw my motion then and send it to committee.
And coming out at tomorrow's committee meeting, you will have a draft. We are that close.
So Catherine, I don't think any actions needed to, it's already on the agenda for tomorrow's meeting for public safety.
I think it'd be worth it, just so it's clear what's happened, to make a motion to refer to.
Move to refer to public safety.
There's a motion to refer to the safety committees. There's a second. Second discussion?
Just before the committee takes up deliberations, while I'm basically in agreement with the draft that I've received from Lee and from the mayor, there are two statements, misstatements of fact on the second page. Under the question, is there a problem? It says, two sentences, sexual offenders have a high recidivism rate. And the second sentence is, this is why these offenders are required to be registered with the state authorities for life. Both of those are factually incorrect. Sexual offenders have the same reticism rate of twelve point seven percent that other criminals have. It may be considered high. I know, I know where that came from. It came from the Eighth Court of Appeals, where the judge misstated and said they have a very high recidivism rate. It's the same as any other crime. And the offenders are not required to be registered for life. Some of them are approximately, sixty-five percent of them are, the others are not. So some are, some are not. So I just wanted to set the record.
All right. We got a motion to refer. I don't believe we've ordered on that yet. Any other discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Send it to the committee. Okay. Communications and recommendations of the mayor. I've got, I had some requests over the last few months. Would I be ever giving something like a state of the city address to you? It says in the code book that I should make communications to you whenever I think it's appropriate. And so tonight seemed like a good time. It's five to eight. We've been here for a few minutes, so I'm gonna take about five or 10 minutes and just kind of go over some things about where we've gone this past year, where I think we might be going. So if you'll indulge me that time. I think we've been a very productive council. You know, three of, or I should say, let's see, four of us were elected last year, so we came together. And at our first meeting in April, I gave you a list of some of my priorities and policy initiatives. The short list was, number one, priority, safe neighborhoods and streets. Number two, maintain low tax rates and reduce taxes whenever possible. And number three, preserve and protect our small town identity, our quality. our quality of life in our historic downtown. We spent a lot of our first few months working on the police department. In fact, at those very first meetings, we came in and I had some suggestions. And with your support and cooperation and your ideas and your leadership, we made some changes right away. In the middle of a budget year, in the middle of the budget year, we reprioritized and did some things. I had suggested during the campaign that we should have more patrol hours. We should work on making the patrol more effective and efficient, and that we should value an hour spent on patrol over an hour spent at a desk. And so, there's a number of ways that we tried to do that. One was, we hired a new full-time officer. Another was, my first official order was to raise the casual call officer role from where it was, which I think we had one, I think we had one on the roster at the time. And my directive to the chief was to hold that between six and ten. Today, it's at six. In the next couple of weeks, it'll be at seven. And there's three more in the pipeline that are gonna put us at ten. And that's made a significant difference in our staffing and our ability to maintain the kinda patrol schedule that we want and need to, even when people are sick and on vacation. We've got high-impact events going on in the city that would otherwise stress our ability to maintain the kinda patrol schedule that we want. The other part was the technology upgrade. We went back and reviewed the capital budget. We worked in getting the computers in the cars. That has improved our efficiency. We bought radar units for the cars. We bought tasers for the officers to improve their safety and ability to be safe. And, uh, one of my goals and that we've moved forward on was to reinstitute the canine officer program, which we had not had for a few years. And we have been able to do that. We got on the list. We've fitted in our budget. Dog and officer are in training right now. And on May twenty-eighth, they're gonna be graduating, be ready to be out on the street and serving. We'll, we'll do some drug training later. And that's a good program. As a result of some of these, we saw a significant drop in crime. And you can debate whether that's a direct relationship or not, but you can't debate the fact that where the goal was to increase patrol shifts by twenty percent, we increased it by twenty-five percent through those changes. And while we spent a little more money on the police, it wasn't all that much more. So, we, you know, we diverted some money there, but not anything like what had been suggested. There were suggestions a year ago that we should spend all of the TID money on the police department, an additional four-hundred thousand dollars a year. Marty would like that. He's shaking his head right now, but it's not gonna happen. Their budget's over two million dollars a year, and that's, that's enough. I mean, our city taxpayers paid just as much into the sheriff's department as if you lived in the town of Hudson or the town of Troy. The town of Troy spends a total of around twenty thousand dollars a year for law enforcement and rely on the sheriff's department for the rest. A city resident who lives just across the border helps support twenty, how many we got now? Twenty-five, twenty-three, plus the casual call, plus some others, at a tune of over two million dollars a year. And so, this is a tension. We want to have a strong police department, because we wanna have safe neighborhoods and streets.
You spoke about the reduction, or the, um, reduction in crime. Can you speak anything about the increase in the number of tickets or arrests that have been made?
I can, but I didn't bring those statistics with me. I provided some to you recently. The number of traffic arrests was up around fifteen percent, I believe. If I can get that to you.
I was just, that was the other side of the equation I was looking for.
And, you know, philosophies differ on this. We can't control who comes across the bridge from Minnesota and decides that Hudson looks like it's a good place to commit a crime. We can't control that. But if they come to case doing a robbery of one of our businesses in the Hill Business District, if they see a patrol car there when they come over, it is my hope that they look somewhere else and don't commit that crime. And I think over time, that we'll probably see that, that's the case. We had some issues with some particular neighborhoods. We've gone to a more focused patrol strategy in those higher-crime neighborhoods, so that now there are three patrol districts. And the one just particularly, just north of, uh, I-ninety-four, gets the most intensive patrol activity now. So, we get faster response times. Again, we have more visibility of cars on the street and officers on the street. And then, I should mention one more thing. I challenged, uh, both the EMS, the ambulance service, and the police department to be innovative. They came up with and proposed to us, and I like the idea. And you funded it in the budget. We're just about ready to implement it. And that is the concept of, instead of having our paramedics, while they're on-call and waiting for an ambulance call, to be over here in just an on-call status, that we would instead hire community service officers through the police department that were paramedic-trained. And that lets our paramedics be doing other duties, police duties, whether they're serving a subpoena, doing a variety of things, that will take the load off the full-time sworn officers and let them be out on patrol or writing a report or doing an investigation. With these other tasks, we would have to have an officer do, won't, they will be freed up to do something else. And we're about ready to, um, hire and put in place four of those. And so, that'll be another significant improvement to how our patrol officers, their effectiveness and efficiency while they're on their shift. So, I'm very pleased with some of these changes, I think, over the past year. And this was April to April. We've done a lot to change there, and I give the chief a lot of credit. But that was one of the major areas that we spent time on. I had suggested that we should complete Phase Three and Lakefront Park as soon as possible, consistent with the top-quality result. This probably cost me about the most heartburn. Made me, made Scott think I was temporarily insane one day. I know that. But it's a project that we care a lot about. I'm very, very pleased with the result. And I'd, I'd say to our, uh, to Chuck, the engineer back there, you know, we, we did some last-minute changing, raising the path and, and so on with the wall. The function of that wall during this flood was just about the best you could hope for. That wall sits at six-hundred-and-eighty-four feet above sea level, the top of the new wall. And we mov-, we moved the path to about the same, so it acts as a functional seawall, even though it's not a seawall. We all know that. But it functionally acted as a seawall. The water came to within about three inches of the top of it. People were enjoying the park, walking down a dry path, fishing from the wall. Um, I went down several times over the weekend during our high water, and it's really done pretty well. And I think that park with the irrigation will get even better turf going down there. And it's really gonna be something that we can be thankful that we got it done and something that we can say that's, that's something to be, to be proud of. Up at the old hospital site, the, the grass is going. We, we leveled and, you know, grassed that in. The park board's starting to talk about what to do up there. That is just probably one of the nicest pieces of property in the whole St. Croix River Valley. There are paths along the tree. I don't know how many of you have ever been up the iron stairs just over here from the public safety building. You can take stairs up. There's the old road that goes out on the point. And so, I hope that we continue to develop that park, and they're working on that. Next thing was our energy consumption. I have to say, this has probably been one of the biggest frustrations for me. It's a goal. We completed an energy audit. We have hired Honeywell to, uh, to help us with energy efficiency retrofit ideas. And they're currently working. We, we did a, a contract with them to do it. We have set aside seventy thousand dollars in this year's budget to go towards these improvements. And my goal was that we would take our per-capita energy consumption down five percent in a two-year period, knowing that it would take a while. It takes a lot longer. I mean, here we are a year later, and we're still studying the problem. We've done a few things. It just, we have not really moved along with the speed that I had hoped that we would. But we're becoming aware of energy. We've started looking at, for example, the nine-eleven Fourth Street Municipal Building is our most energy inefficient building. It's really, really old. It's got outdated, um, uh, systems in there. It's not a high occupancy building on some of the floors, relatively low occupancy. And yet, it doesn't have any sophisticated controls for setbacks. Everybody's home thermostat now, or most of us have been driven to have a setback thermostat that lowers the temperature at times and raises it at others. We have city buildings that, for the most part, don't have those, and we need to get that. So, we're working on that. In the same line, I've been working with the Intergovernmental Advisory Council. Together, community-wide, we're going to bring forth, for your approval, some sustainability principles, a framework that I believe that we can all agree on, everyone. Even people that roll their eyes when they hear the word sustainability. Because this is about principles that we can all really already agree on. And so, we'll be, I'll be bringing that out in about a month. And then, the, probably one of the things that you oughta be the proudest of, I think, was, was moving to bring competition, the forces of market competition, into our bidding process. We looked for innovative ways for a year now to try to save money. And the health insurance was the biggest of those problems. Ultimately, we came up with a plan that established a high deductible plan. It's coupled with an individual savings account. It's an HSA-like account. It's called an HRA account. We left the state plan. We had a lot of resistance to the concept of it from our annuitants, people that were Medicare-eligible, that had retired, but had always stayed on the state plan with us, 'cause they were afraid that it wasn't gonna be a good deal for them. But I believe we really, we were able to negotiate a group Medicare-plus-type plan that had good coverage and saved those folks in the neighborhood of three-hundred dollars a month, which is pretty significant if you're retired. For our employees, uh, we have an incentive-based plan for putting the money into the HRA, so that we're trying to become a healthier group. We've got both the incentive of, if you don't go to the doctor for something that was very minor, that money's staying in your account. So, the actual patient or family is in a position of, uh, deciding for themselves when to go, with the benefit of, hopefully, we'll be smarter and better, uh, at, um, our utilization of healthcare.
If I could interrupt for one second. Already, in the three months of two thousand and nine, I've had twenty times more conversations with employees about, not specific healthcare issues, but them, you can tell they're having to think about it a little bit more instead of just running to the doctor, because they're making decisions, 'cause they have HRA money. Do they want to? Can they wait till? So, I mean, we, we have achieved it, just based on the conversations they've come to me, you know, in my HR role, so.
The, uh, there have been others. For example, the idea of bidding out things, um, for our property casualty insurance, there was this significant savings of about thirty-five thousand dollars a year. And, and there have been others. And so, I give you a lot of credit for, uh, uh, being a part of that. The, where are we gonna go next? I guess I'd, I'd say, let me, let me touch on the library, because in, back in April, I had said that we should evaluate the library proposal regarding a building purchase. And I think we spent a lot of time on that. And from the beginning, I thought there were two main questions. In fact, in February last year, I gave to the Library Foundation a list of twenty-two points that I believed. And I reviewed them again with one of the library board members the other day. And I haven't changed my mind very much about most of them. But there are two main questions. One is, should the library be an owner of a building? A sole occupant-owner of a building? Or should they be a renter in a multi-tenant building, so to speak? That's a basic paradigm that needs to be decided. The other, and it kinda goes hand in hand, is, should we renovate and recommit to that nine-eleven Fourth Street building? That was purchased from the county when they moved out, with the idea of moving the library there? We now need to decide, are we going to commit to that with a long-range vision on the range of twenty years? Or are we going to begin the process of moving out of that building? Because this is not a good place for a straddle. It's an expensive building. It's gonna nickel and dime us to death. The energy costs are huge. Every time the roof needs repaired, it's a hundred thousand. We have to put a hundred thousand into the elevator, and so on and so forth. So, we really need to decide. I hope that we can do a good evaluation of if there's ways to remodel, to renovate, to do energy refits, and we're gonna need to do that. Already, Honeywell has identified that one as one of our prime places to spend money in order to save money on energy. But before we spend money on its current configuration, we really need to look at what's gonna happen there. And that's a good segue into the question of the public safety building. We've hired, uh, Frisbee Architects through a bid process. We selected them to work with us on the evaluation of, do we need the public sa-, a new public safety building? What should it look like? Some site selection, and they're in the process of that. The question of whether that building will house the police department and maybe a fire substation, or maybe some ambulance substation. Could it be a joint building, police and library? There are a number of those around. They can be done with separate wings. I don't know if that'll turn out to be appropriate. There's a lot of things that we need to look at yet. But if there's any thought of that, then that's gonna make nine-eleven Fourth Street kind of an orphan for us. And so, you know, that's kind of our problem here. So, I want you to be thinking about that as we go forward. These are some of our challenges. The Public Works and Parks Department, we completed the merger, which was, was already kind of merged, but we, we had sort of two teams playing under a one-team name. But now, we've merged them down into one team. We hired a director. I think it's operating pretty well, and I'm happy with it. And, um, there's, there's, there's some adjustments still going on there. And I said that when we talked about merging the water and the sewer. There is some disruption that happens in those. You gotta really look at whether it's worth it or not. I think in this case, it's worth it, and I'm pretty comfortable with our decision with the utilities to leave them separate. Our planning department, we are well into the process of redoing our comprehensive plan. Our current nineteen-ninety-three comprehensive plan needs to be finished and updated by the end of two thousand and nine. We have been having, um, uh, at least monthly, the Plan Commission is spending a whole meeting on that. We've had a, we had one or two, uh, open houses already. We had one. We've got another one coming up. It's the third Thursday. I believe that might be the twenty-third of the month, four-thirty to seven. The public's welcome to come. We encourage you to come. The topic this time in specific is land use planning, and that's really the crux of the comprehensive plan. So, we're talking about things like, what should the zoning be out at the corner of Carmichael and Vine? Currently, it's R-one, and the comp plan has, has it as public use, because the county annexed it, wanting it to be public use. In the next few months, we need to make a decision. Should that be residential development, or should that stay public? That's just an example of one of the kinds of decisions that we'll be making. There are many others, and that's something that, the more the public gets involved, the better. And then, I'd like to talk a little bit about the upcoming budget. Some of what's been going on with the stimulus, uh, funding. We've mentioned a little bit here tonight. Let me give you a little bit of a preview of what budget might look this year. Let me give you a little bit of a preview of what budget might look this year, what it might look like. The levy limits that have been imposed by the state on local municipalities have varied a little bit over the last few years. Last year, through his line item veto, the governor raised the levy limit up to three point eight-six percent. This year, he's proposed three percent. The joint finance seems to concur with the three percent limit, and so for the two thousand ten, two thousand and eleven state budget, it looks as though we can do advanced planning right now based on there being a levy limit of three percent. What that means for Hudson is that we would be allowed to levy as much as about forty thousand dollars more. Now, we just entered some new contracts with at least a couple of our unions for a four percent raise this year and a three percent raise next year. Each one percent in, um, staff wage costs the city forty thousand dollars. So just to make our staff wage increases that we have already, for the most part, we've contracted for, we haven't settled with the Teamsters yet, because, well, that's gonna be in mediation soon. But to make the three percent, that's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Now, there's a levy limit of forty, but it gets worse than that. The shared revenue formula for the state of Wisconsin has always been skewed against communities like Hudson that have worked actively to bring businesses to town and increase our tax base. So that in our peer group statewide, by that I mean very tightly peer group, cities that are in population of ten thousand to fourteen thousand, Marinette gets four point eight million a year in shared revenue. Chippewa Falls gets three point six million. Platteville gets two point eight million. River Falls gets two point three million. Two Rivers gets four point one million. Whitewater gets three point seven million. River Falls gets two point three million. Those communities are the same size as we are. We get two hundred and thirty thousand last year, and under the proposed formula, those who got the least in the past take the biggest cuts. Those who got the most in the past take no cut or a very small cut. If you haven't studied that, you need to look at that. But the concept is, we don't need it. The good news of that is, we don't rely on it, to a great extent. But that's about a twenty-three thousand dollar cut. So if you go back, the levy limit log caps us at forty thousand increase, but our shared revenue is twenty-three thousand less. That means we've got about seventeen thousand there for increases. But our staff cost increases are going to go up about a hundred and twenty. So for next year, as we look at the budget, we need to continue to aggressively find ways to cut our costs. If we don't, then we will have to look at cutting positions, or cutting services, cutting programs, that kind of thing.
Of the forty thousand, how much did the Tiff District add last year?
Betty, can you answer that?
I didn't hear it.
Of the forty thousand that we would get, three percent on this year would be forty thousand. If we hadn't closed the Tiff District, what would that have been?
If we hadn't closed the Tiff District, the three percent would probably have been still a three percent.
The three percent of what? It would have been, I guess, thirty thousand or twenty-five thousand, or, I, I would assume that there's a fairly large differential there.
Right, there was. We had increased our tax levy. I can't, off the top of my head, I don't remember, I want to say seven hundred thousand? Four hundred thousand?
Four hundred. Four hundred.
So we do have that four hundred thousand that will carry in, but we've got to, you know, use that for further expenditure.
Okay.
Well, that was, just that number would have been different had we not closed it.
It would have been less.
Four hundred thousand, basically.
Yeah, okay.
But, and we tried to be frugal and prudent about the fact that that was essentially a windfall, and to spend that additional, not on things that will, will have an increasing cost as we go forward. You recall, we also put away a little money by establishing some funds. There's a half a million dollars that we put away towards the potential construction of a new facility, such as a public safety facility. We have about a half million dollars in impact funds towards library improvements or expansion. We have some money that we put away to buffer against the potential of healthcare cost increase, which is something that we can't control more than what we've already been doing, trying to be healthier, try to utilize less. Starting in a couple of months, we will begin to get a monthly report of our employees' utilization of healthcare and where it ranks according to expected and norms and averages, and we'll get an idea. If we're way above, you can expect that we'll get a rate increase. If we're below, or about on par, then, so, we'll have a little advance warning. It won't be like last year where, boy, with the state plan, they didn't release a word about anything. They just sent you the bill and said, here it is, and it's ten percent more this year. Here it is, and it's eight percent more this year. So they're, it's very tough to plan ahead.
They're getting monthly reports, individual, but Sohobek will be reporting back shortly saying, you know, this is the industry standard, this is where we fit in. There's the, two portions of the insurance, how we're doing versus what we should have in the account versus what we have expended, so it'll be interesting to see.
And then the, so, I would recommend that the hiring fee, freeze should stay in place for now. I think that we've been relatively flexible about it. It hasn't been a hard and fast freeze. It just simply means that we're going to review every single position before it gets filled. And it only makes sense to continue on with that. I'd like to talk a little bit about the grant process for these federal funds, because honestly, we've dealt with some of that administratively, and I haven't brought all those to you at the council. Some of these have come up on very short notice. But to start with the Police Department, there's the JAG grant, the Justice Assistance Grants. This is something that's funded every year. We're typically eligible to apply and get something. But this year, they put an extra something like a billion dollars in that, and that's sprinkled down. The allocation formula went by your Uniform Crime Report Statistics, and we got eligible for fourteen thousand dollars, which we fully anticipate getting. That, that one is not one where it's a wish thing, it's an expectation. And we applied for radio upgrades that were going to be mandated or required over the next couple of years anyway. This is going to narrow band, more efficient use of the police band frequency. It helps us in an emergency to be more interoperable with other, um, police departments and agencies. It's something that came out of nine eleven, and there's a new federal standard. The COPS grant. COPS grants have been there before. The, the Clinton-era COPS program was when we first got the Public Police School Liaison Officer. And this year, there's significant increase to the COPS grant. We have, I have suggested, and Marty's, has that one gone in yet, Marty?
We've applied for it already.
We've already applied for a COPS grant. So the way that's work, works is, significant amount of federal money, it comes down to the state, the state decides how to allocate it. That formula is mysterious, but in the past, it's largely gone to southeast Wisconsin, but we feel we can make a pretty good case for it. It fits with our plan for improving the Police Department. It's been in our long-term plan to add another patrol officer when we can. This one comes with some strings. You get funding for three years, but you have to agree that you'll pay them and keep them on the force for at least the fourth year. So it's essentially a three-to-one, three federal, one local match at an entry level, plus maybe some steps. I think that fits pretty well with what we're trying to accomplish in Hudson, and so that's one where we can accept some strings. Understand that you'll still get to talk about that if, if we get awarded the grant, and we can talk about whether we accept it, I believe. And so we'll be back, and no one knows yet about that. We got an urban forestry grant, which was increased a little bit. It's gonna, gonna be four thousand dollars, and we match it locally, so we got eight thousand dollars to spend on planting trees. We talked a little bit tonight about the DOT, federal stimulus grants. The Phase One, we struck out. Phase Two, we're going to pitch four projects. One is Wisconsin Street, a street that's needed rebuilding for some time. Eleventh Street, one of our highest traffic streets, and then Hagan and Vine. And I think if we get funding on any one of them, we'd be really foolish not to take it. I am not holding my breath for it, but I think we've put together a good, a good package for those. Am I forgetting any other stimulus grants?
We're waiting on there's some energy available.
That's right.
It's, the DOTs influx, this energy thing's all over the planet. It's every, I get an email every week telling me something different. They've come down with funding, but it's only basically the eastern and southern part of the state. They've just given money to a bunch of counties and cities. Forty percent of the money, sixty percent of the money is going to the state, but the state has to still apply to the federal government. They aren't just giving it to them. And in that sixty percent, then there could be some trickle-down to the, the rest of us. So we're working with our energy people from Honeywell ASG. They're keeping us abreast, we're doing the same. So there may be some funds to help us fund some of the energy projects we're doing, but it's all over the board.
In the, in the DOT funding, um, the, the pre-fund DOT projects, the closest project to us was Connersville, Wisconsin. There were none in the immediate vicinity of Pierce Counties. That, that one was just partially a little bit in far eastern St. Croix County, but nothing near here. Phase two, or Phase One, um, they funded two bridges, the Milwaukee paper reported this week, two bridges that get an average of ten cars a day, each of them. It's hard to figure. We determined as an administrate, as an administration, that we should not apply for the Walnut Street Bridge to the Dyke Road. After we had made that decision, we were informed by DOT that, well, that's just as well, because it wouldn't have been eligible. And, you know, this has been difficult, because we, we don't really understand, the rules are changing. But the energy efficiency grants, here we are. We've already studied it. We wanna do it. We've got projects. We've got engineers working on it. We know what needs to be done. We put aside seventy thousand dollars to do some of it ourselves, so we could do a local match. But, you know, here there's sixty percent of the funds, eleven million dollars in the state of Wisconsin, they've just announced that it's going to be distributed at a later date. The criteria and everything haven't even been decided yet. So.
And Eau Claire was the closest community to that, and then it jumped to Wausau, and then I think Eau Claire got a hundred and seventeen.
So in the first, in the first forty percent, Eau Claire was the closest to us to get any money. So there's, there's a.
And there was no application process? They just said, here you go.
Yeah. It's, um, some, some of that is frustrating, but we're trying to do, to do our best with that. I still think we need to take a can-do approach, as I said, in regard to the shared revenue money. The good thing about it is, a ten percent cut doesn't hurt you very bad if you're not wholly dependent on that money. For those cities that it's such a huge chunk of their budget coming from state income taxes and state sales taxes being redistributed back to them, from us to them, they're very dependent on that, and it makes it almost impossible for them to make their budget now without making significant cuts. In our case, we will make cuts, but we'll figure out a way. And I think we're, as a consequence, we're being much more aggressive about seeking innovation, seeking cost-cutting measures than some of those that are getting all that money from the state. So there's good and bad to it. We've talked about having a goal-setting session with the council. That was done a few years ago. I guess I'd like your input on that, if you'd like to have some sort of a work session when we have no agenda, but we just talk about long-range planning. Haven't done that all year. If you'd like to, let me know. But I think it's been a good year. I give you a lot of credit, because we've had some fairly heated, at times, exchanges. We've had a lot of divided votes. This is far from a rubber stamp. Somebody asked me one time recently, can't you control the council? I just laughed. I said, I can make suggestions, but you've got an independent-thinking group of people there, and I think that's good for the city and for our constituents. So with that, I thank you. That was a lot longer than I said it was gonna be. And if you haven't fallen asleep, I think it's good to recap where we've been and start to think about where, where we should go. So thanks a lot, and any items from the, any elder person?
I have one thing.
Yes.
April was National Volunteer Month, and I just wanna thank all of our residents who take time out of their schedules to volunteer in the community. You really do make a difference in the lives of others, and your efforts contribute to the strength and success of Hudson and our, all of our residents. So thank you, whether you're a scout leader, or helping in the schools, or in the community, or in a nonprofit, thanks for all your efforts.
And I think it's a good, well, it's not the right word, but for example, what's happening in Fargo right now, that our community does it when there isn't a crisis, which leads you to believe. I mean, I know Alan is from up there. My son spent all last week up there working on stuff, and I think it's a good sign that in good times, our community volunteers, so that if there ever is a crisis, we can only hope they'll respond accordingly.
Anyone else? Uh, city attorney?
Nope.
City administrator?
Elections next Tuesday. Polls are open from seven to eight.
We're ready to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls, we're adjourned.